1:30, I'm going to call us back to order. If you're goofing around, we'll get our business done. So, anyway, welcome back. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, March 29th, for our 1:30 afternoon session. We have three Public Works items and an executive session to work through. So let's start with our first Public Works item, which is Item A, Order 16-03-29-10, in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to enter into a 10-year landowner agreement under the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program in support of common resource objectives within the Howard Buford Recreation Area. We have with us our Parks and Animal Services Manager, Mike Russell. Good morning. And we also have Chris Horsinger from Friends of Buford Park. Or, good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Welcome. Chair, Stuart, Commissioners. Yes, today I have Chris Horsinger, Executive Director of Friends of Buford Park in Mount Pisgah. And we were also expecting Jared Jebussek from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. But...
There he is.
Come on up, Jared.
And Damian Miller.
And Damian Miller, as well. So...
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah.
Sorry I'm late.
No, it's okay. We just got started. So, proud to present to you an opportunity. Lane County Parks, as you know, operates very efficiently on our budget. One way we do that is through partnerships like this. We provide opportunities to partner with agencies like U.S. Fish and Wildlife to bring value-added to our services. In this case, it is helping us reach some common management objectives in the Howard Buford Recreation Area. Examples of that might include fire preparations for ecological burns that we provide out there. Other opportunities will be talked about by our partners, and they can elaborate more on that if you have questions. This is coming to you because it's a 10-year agreement. This is a standard partners agreement from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Jared can speak more to the specifics about the program that this falls under. But it allows them access to the property to work with us and our partners, Friends of Buford Park and Mount Pisgah, as we continue to care for and restore the habitats that are within the park. You have anything else you want to add?
I would just say a couple of things. You know, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is one of the partners with Lane County in the Rivers to Ridges partnership, along with 15 other partners. The...this agreement helps provide the in-kind resources of any number of tools that are primarily based at the Finley National Wildlife Refuge, but in particular, the fire engines and fire tenders that are important to safely and effectively implement prescribed burns that are essential in the management of rare prairie and oak savanna habitat. In the past, this program has helped provide support for the restoration of the South Meadow Floodplain area, south of the Arboretum, within Howard Buford Recreation Area back in 2003. And other examples include just technical assistance. And so I see this is an agreement that will help facilitate the greater coordination of federal, state, and local conservation objectives on protected lands like Howard Buford Recreation Area. So I'm strongly in support of this being approved.
So I'd say something about the program generally, or how the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service operates?
Well, the Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program is what allows the service to go off refuge beyond the white signs and help partners doing voluntary habitat restoration. The county has a fantastic piece of property there with a lot of great partners. They already have plans that are vetted with a lot of other conservation partners. And this agreement would just allow the Fish and Wildlife Service to bring whatever resources we can to help the county manage the property, which has fantastic oak and prairie habitats that are rare in the valley. And the Fish and Wildlife Service is very interested in helping with those habitats as we work on the refuges. But obviously, we can't conserve all the species just on the refuges. That's why it's really great when we can work with great partners like the county.
So as a point of information for the board, this 10-year agreement will fold nicely into the effort that we're currently underway, where we are developing a Habitat Management Plan for the park. And once that's developed, presented to you, and hopefully adopted, this agreement will help us implement the plan, basically, and help us manage the habitats that have been identified for restoration and other things. So it's kind of hand-in-hand with what we're working towards at the park. So that's our report, and we're happy to answer any questions. Mr. Bozovic?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russell, and thank you for being here this morning. Chris, good to see you. The...a general question. You know, we're undergoing a comprehensive master plan review of the parks right now. Can you talk about how this fits in with that plan? Or if it does?
Yeah, thank you. The Commissioner, the Parks Master Plan is being developed as well, along with the Habitat Management Plan. They all have to be consistent with one another, and we're working to make sure that that happens. But obviously, Howard Buford Recreation Area will be represented in the master plan. Refer to the Buford Park Master Plan. It's a park that has its own master plan, as well as the Habitat Management Plan. So they'll all be referencing each other and consistent with each other throughout the process.
Okay. Then, so we had characterized this as a...just using common resources to achieve a common goal on separately-owned parcels of land. I would praise that. I think, you know, with the situation with the Lane County Parks, as you know all too well, Mike, you say we're operating efficiently. What you mean is we're operating on a shoestring. And, you know, by and large, the partnerships that you forge with both the state and with the federal government regarding the maintenance and betterment of our park is commendable. So thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Thanks for this partnership. It's a great example of how we can work together.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Bozovic?
Thank you. So, I only have a couple of quick questions, and it's mostly some concerns. Just to clarify that there won't be restrictions on some of the uses that I'm most concerned about. And one of them is in that whole rivers-to-ridges concept. The future connection to Willamille Lane across the river and be able to connect with that bike pass system, Doris Ranch, and all that is really important to me in the long run, master plan rise. And I'm concerned...just want to make sure that there's no way that this partnership might be able to impact our ability to do that. You know, we kind of already hamstrung ourselves a bit with some of the BPA mitigation improvements along the river there, where we may have difficulty crossing those areas. So I don't want to add another complication to making that connection. So just...that's kind of the... And in addition to that, any other new facilities or paths or trails we might choose to put in or improve trails, you know, because there are some rather muddy ones there that could stand some improvement. But just, you know, what other restrictions, you know, would this partnership bring with it?
So I was concerned about that as well. I clarified with Jared that this doesn't preclude our management of the park. What it does is provides, on a project-by-project basis, ability for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife to provide resources for identified projects. And it provides them, basically, access to the property. And doesn't necessarily restrict a bridge connection over to, say, the TNC property at some point in the future. It doesn't restrict our ability to manage the trail system. That's my understanding, and Jared can confirm that.
No, not at all. That shouldn't be a problem. The only thing that this agreement restricts is there's a 10-year period of time called the Habitat Retention Period that is really geared towards landowners. Most of the time, we're working with private landowners. And what it's supposed to do is protect the federal investment, where if we go out and help somebody take competing vegetation out from oaks or prairie or something, that the landowner doesn't finish the job and plant Christmas trees or a vineyard or something like that. So really, that's...in terms of this piece of property, that's, of course, never going to happen. So the piece of paper itself is hopefully just a formality.
I was looking forward to Mount Pisgah Morlow. Mount Pisgah Morlow. That's great. I appreciate that. I sent...I kind of tipped Mike off with an email earlier today that I was going to be asking that question just because I wanted to clarify that it... even though the memo does state that it won't have future impact, I just want to make sure that that was clear in public here. And I know that there are some places we can use your help, because I've hiked down to kind of the backside sort of... I guess it's the north, almost east corner there, down that one trail, which is a pretty gnarly trail in a lot of ways. But there's a lot of blackberry along that trail that could be nice oak savanna, and your resources will be helpful, maybe restoring that area.
And I would add that we have this existing project approval process, where we develop a project concept, bring it to Lane County for collaboration about exactly how best to do it on the park, and then document that plan for enhancement. And, you know, where you walked was an area we haven't worked yet, probably, because, you know... And I think I know the trail you're talking about. But we have a plan for that trail this summer, too. The point is, is that there's full control by Lane County to approve the projects. And that suite of projects that we are authorized to do are the ones we would turn to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and say, "Hey, can you come bring some resources to this goal, this project?"
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. So, Mr. Bozovic?
Yeah, thanks. I move approval of Order 16-03-29-10 in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to enter into a 10-year landowner agreement under the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program in support of the common resource objectives within the Howard Buford Recreational Area.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the partnership. See you again. Item B is a resolution in Order 16-03-29-11. It's in the matter of initiating proceedings to withdraw county road status, but not the public road status of a portion of County Road Number 269, located between Beamer Road and Shercon Road. Its tech slots, 18-03-29 and 32, 19-03-05 and 08. Resolution and order sets the public meeting... public hearing for May 3rd, 2016. So I'd like to welcome Jay Blamey, our county surveyor. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here this afternoon to request the board to initiate proceedings to withdraw county road status, but not the public road status of a portion of County Road 269, located between the current end-of-county maintenance of Beamer Road and Shercon Road, as shown on Attachment A of this agenda item. The portion of road proposed to be withdrawn is unconstructed, is approximately 2.35 miles in length. It's important to note that any portion of Beamer Road or Shercon Road that is currently being maintained by county forces will not be affected by this action. The reason for this action is being brought before the board is because of a Lane County land management application for a non-farm dwelling from the owner of a property located just beyond the current end-of-county maintenance on Beamer Road. One of the conditions of approval for that application is to construct approximately 1,000 feet of additional roadway beyond the current end-of-county maintenance. If county road status is withdrawn, the landowner and any subsequent landowners along this section of road will be able to build the road to an LAR standard, which is a lesser standard than a county road. And that would be a considerable cost savings to the landowner. If the county road status is withdrawn, Lane County will not be responsible for the maintenance beyond the current end-of-county maintenance of Beamer Road, adding a cost savings for potential future maintenance costs to the county road fund as well. Again, I want to stress that the portion of county road proposed to be withdrawn is approved. Its status will change to a local access road and will remain open to the public. Per ORS 368.026 and Lane Manual 15.300, conversion of county roads to local access roads may be considered where little need exists, where the roads are undeveloped rightways or dirt roads, or are not currently being maintained by county forces. This portion of County Road 269 meets those criteria. The surveyor's office has notified Lane County Transportation Planning, Lane County Planning, utility companies, and neighboring landowners about this proposal, and have refused...received a few questions, but ultimately, no one had any objections to this proposal. ORS 368.026 states that a governing body may initiate proceedings to withdraw county road status by having the county road official prepare a report stating reasons for the proposed withdrawal and the effects the proposed withdrawal may have on abutting landowners. That report has been attached to this resolution and order. ORS 368.026 also requires a public hearing to be set if the board decides to initiate proceedings. Our office would like to set a date of May 3rd, 2016, 1:30 PM, to conduct the public hearing. At this time, I'd like to turn this matter back over to the board for discussion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments at this point? Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not necessarily to this particular road, but is this something we may be seeing more in the future? Some of these, I almost call them outline county roads, becoming more local access? Because I look at this, and obviously, if we're responsible for the maintenance, and it's...to me, I think it's a... I think it's a good idea personally, because this one does not really... From a county road perspective, I just don't see why it would be part of the system. So is this something that we may be seeing more in the future?
It is possible. Withdrawals are very rare, but in a situation like this, where the road's unconstructed, the properties along this road are very large, and the majority of it's owned by one landowner. It makes sense to do this. In fact, the landowner that owns the majority of the properties actually contacted our office and asked about vacating the road. So we provided him with the information on how to vacate the road, and we may see that come to the board in the future.
Yeah, I mean, it's... From where we are today and not really understanding what the future holds for road funds, frankly, I view this as a...an idea to take a look at in the future. So this particular system, in particular, I think resonates quite well to what's being presented to the board today. So I appreciate that. And I...hopefully, not to put added pressure on the priority list, but I think this is something we can look at, understanding that Lane County is a big county, obviously. But if there's other opportunities here for these county roads to become more local access roads, I think that that's something that we... I believe we should pursue. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to add just a couple of comments. And I know, hopefully, during the public hearing, we'll be able to hear if people have concerns. But just in looking at the aerial map, it's...because some of the boxes are right over some of my thoughts. It's kind of like we've heard from residents on Ricketts Road in the past with the flooding issues. And, you know, this road's not constructed, so it's really not an option for people to use as a secondary access. But if at some point, this, you know, turns into a local access road and it actually gets constructed to a point where it might make sense to have that as a secondary exit for Ricketts Road, that might be an option. I just want to make sure that, as we think about this in the future, and hopefully, we'll get public input that'll allow us to understand whether or not, you know, it's even physically possible. I'm also aware that, at least I thought in my conversations about a new golf course that I believe is in the process with the University of Oregon, I thought that that golf course was going to be accessed off Shercon Road. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, as some of these things are taking place, we don't jeopardize either people's access or, you know, people's current plans to do something in the future. And, you know, I think Mr. Derek Saliers?
Saliers.
Was, I think, probably one of the folks involved with the golf course property. So...and I noticed that his comments to date haven't done... What did you say? They didn't have any concerns at this time. So maybe my concerns are unwarranted, but I just want to make sure as we go through the public process that we get people here and just make sure that we're not making a mistake in downgrading this.
Mr. Saliers was one of the gentlemen that came in and talked with our office about vacating the road. So he had absolutely no objection to withdrawing the county road status. I believe that the access for the golf course probably takes off of Shercon Road somewhere, and not so much this portion of road that's unconstructed.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we'll just make that verified as we go through the process. But those are just some comments I wanted to share right now. Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. And I'll just, you know, we'll flesh this out, I guess, at the public hearing and a little bit more in the discussions there. But I just...it does appear that this is actually a section of road, although undeveloped would ultimately become a connector between two county-maintained roads if it was developed. And I always am reluctant as an engineer that did enough traffic planning and all that to give up an opportunity for a connector. You know, the street connectivity rules that were in place for a while in Eugene were particularly about that in that you really don't want a whole bunch of dead ends in your traffic system. You always want other ways to get people around and everything. So that'll be...I'd be interested to hear from maybe even our transportation planning folks about the importance of whether we should maintain the possibility of a future connection. Because, you know, you give these things up, and you basically give them up for all time when you...that opportunity's not there. And then if it does ever get connected and starts carrying through traffic, the next thing we're being asked for is to take back into county maintenance and under built road, you know, because it was built to LAR standards, and now suddenly, we need to maintain it as a collector street or, you know, a major collector of some kind. And then we get stuck with the capital bill of improving it. So it's kind of...I have my concerns, and hopefully, we'll get those addressed when we get to the public hearing. But it seems like, at first blush, it's a great idea, let somebody else take on the cost, and, you know, they can have an LAR. I live on an LAR. I know what it's like to have to come up with $175 with my neighbors and all that stuff to put gravel down. But there's no way that that LAR I live on could ever become a through-county roadway. And most of our county roadways that are through in our rural areas, we've kept maintenance of. You know, I can think of Stagecoach, Nelson Mountain, you know, and many other gravel roads that are still under county maintenance because they are through roads and not, you know, Hall Road, a few others. Many that we have issues with, too, with neighbors and dust and all that good stuff. But I don't want to...without good looks. I will hope that if we do schedule this for May 3rd, that you can ask somebody from transportation planning to attend also to answer questions.
I can do that.
So I would just add, thank you, Commissioner Bozovic, that, you know, some of my travels, I've heard from some of what I consider people to be old-timers, that there's a connector road from Christiansen Road and comes into Crestwell. And it appears that this is what they were talking about that existed, but didn't exist, doesn't exist, you know. And so, anyway, looking forward to further conversations on this. If there's no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the order and resolution setting the public hearing for May 5th... Excuse me, May 3rd, 2016, at 1:30.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass or no pass? Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
All right. Item C is a discussion on the Lane County Forest Work Camp. We have with us Betty Michu, who is a management panelist for Public Works, and Brian Crainer, our Capital Projects Manager. And I notice we have our attorney at hand if need be. All right, so turn it over to Betty or Mr....
I can make a couple of just brief introductory comments, Mr. Chair. This...obviously, there's a long history here, and we'll walk through the history with the Forest Work Camp. I'll just say that, from my perspective here in Lane County, in the past nearly two years now, you know, I've familiarized...had an opportunity to familiarize myself with the operations. As the board knows, in September 2014, the Forest Work Camp was used for staging for the Yellow Point Fire by ODF. That, in addition to continued interest in the community, we've heard from community-supported shelters, from just-in-time, from the city of Eugene officials have expressed interest in the facility. There continues to be a lot of interest and ongoing dialogue about the potential use. And so we brought this item forward to the Facilities Committee on March 7th. I had a discussion there and ultimately we're looking for direction from the Board of Commissioners on entering into a, an open, uh, objective, transparent process, uh, to consider the potential uses of that facility, uh, and to, uh, find the highest and best use, uh, given the limitations that exist, uh, at that facility, uh, to limit the county's, uh, cost and maintenance, uh, requirements and to meet, uh, a valuable need, uh, in the community. So we're seeking the board's direction on that today. This is the beginning of potential, more lengthy public process that we would go through with, uh, more updates in the future for the board, and, uh, so I'll turn it over to Betty and, and Brian to walk through some of the history and the details with you, and then we're here for questions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair, um, Betty Mashu with Public Works Fleet and General Services. Um, as Steve said, the matter before you today is an update and discussion on the Forest Work Camp. So I intend to give a very brief summary of the camp's background, its land use, uh, its current condition and the financial aspects. Um, I think that will give us, uh, plenty of opportunity to have discussion, and Brian will then talk about, uh, policies, um, our recommendations and alternatives. So with that, um, the Forest Work Camp opened in 1991 and it provided a hundred-bed alternative incarceration program in a rural setting for low-risk offenders. The crews there worked on various forest project and provided services to other governmental agencies while they were housed there. Um, it has a number of facilities, uh, structures and utilities there, so they have an admin building which houses, uh, their admin offices, uh, a commercial kitchen, some classroom settings, there's dormitory buildings, there's a laundry building, um, and there's several maintenance shop buildings on the site. Um, utilities include an electrical service, um, there's a well system there, septic system, and a fire suppression system, which is their sprinkler system. Uh, the Forest Work Camp, as you know, closed in, uh, late 2008 primarily due to the loss of federal forest timber payments. So the Forest Work Camp property is approximately a hundred and five acres. It's designated planned forest in the Rural Comprehensive Plan in Zone F1, non-impacted forest land. It was originally established in 1989 under a special use permit, and in 1990, the provision that allowed, um, Forest Work Camp and that zoning was removed. However, um, and then since that time, it operated as a non-conforming use. Um, in 2012, a land use application was approved verifying the camp's non-conforming use and altering its use to include rehabilitative programs and services and forest management programs separate from correctional, um, purposes. Um, there was an additional, uh, planning action approval in 2015 that verified the planning action in 2012 and extended that date to March 19th, 2017, so a little less than a year from now. Um, lane code prohibits resumption of a non-conforming use, so the federal, um, so the Forest Work Camp must demonstrate that it remains in continuous use. And a part of what we see there in the cost of running the camp is we have a rotating shift of temporary unclassified staff, and they work in like ten-hour shifts, shifts to provide pretty much 24/7, um, coverage. And it's necessary because it's a rural setting and it really discourages the theft and vandalism that can occur out there. So, which leads us to like, um, I said, the costs are, um, significant for running the camp. Um, it costs about $250,000 annually to run the camp, primarily that cost is around labor. There are utilities, utilities run about $45,000 a year. So, and that is limited electrical service, and, um, as of now, the, we have, uh, some wells that are operational at the site. There are four original wells, we have two that are actually operating. However, um, the buildings have been winterized, so that's to say that septic and water have not been hooked back up to the buildings. Um, and that's, uh, that addresses some of the current conditions that we're seeing out there. Um, the actions that have taken place with the Forest Work Camp, um, as Steve said, um, ODF, uh, used the site in 2014 to stage, um, fighting the Yellow Point Fire. Um, I think, uh, the Bureau of Land Management sometime uses the site to house some of its equipment. Um, at one point, law enforcement used the site for training purposes, however, I think that was a significant amount of time ago. And in 2013, um, a request for letters of interest was issued by the county and there were three respondents, um, Just In Time, Lane County parole and probation, and the Oregon Public Boarding School Trust, Just In Time, and parole and probation were proposing developing the site as a residential, um, drug and alcohol treatment center, and the Oregon Public Boarding Trust proposed the formation of a public boarding charter school with an outdoor education and leadership curriculum. Um, coincident with the site, we have, Public Works has initiated some, um, mowing, um, we have, we are going to partner with the Sheriff's Inmate Crew to do some yard maintenance and, and, um, yard cleanup and weeding. Um, I visited the camp probably several weeks ago, and I will say there is some pretty marked deterioration in some of the buildings. Now, they have been, um, basically uninhabited for quite some time, so, um, I've seen evidence of like roof leaks, um, rodent infestation, um, so things that you would expect to see when buildings have been largely uninhabited out in the country. So, um, moving forward, Public Works is proposing to do a septic and plumbing assessment along with an assessment of the roofing structures, just to see kind of an idea of what it would take to get those viable again. So, anyway, that's just a brief summary of where we are with the Forest Work Camp. Do you have any questions at this point before I turn it over to Brian?
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Real briefly, um, as Steve alluded to, we were at the Facilities Committee meeting, uh, last, earlier this month, and the, uh, general consensus of the committee was that we should come before the board, and, uh, at that time, we had discussed potential RFP process to really identify and define these proposals that we were hearing from, uh, more or less informally from the public. Uh, it seemed to be a number of those proposals, we seemed to be in a position where we were having a better understanding of the facility and certainly the motivations there, given the cost associated with the facility, um, to reach out and identify those potential uses and evaluate them. So the packet before you contains some decision points with regard to an RFP. Um, I hesitate to discuss those without, um, hearing from the board regarding the concept of an RFP. Um, so I, I suggest turning it over for discussion if the board's comfortable with that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bozovic, do you wanna add anything from the Facilities conversation that, or was it covered?
I think, you know, we basically covered it. I mean, just, it's a continuing expense to the county as it is right now, and it does have limited use, um, based on the zoning, uh, exception that we have, and we are running up against the clock there. So it's kind of a time to make some decisions around this and to do it in a, in a open and transparent fashion that, that administrator, uh, discussed there. So it's how we go about that is, is kind of the, the next decision point, kinda getting staff started on that process, was what the Facilities Committee was basically recommending coming before the board.
And I would just add that, um, Betty talked about it, a little bit about Public Works involvement and everything, but, um, you know, really what I, I heard at, um, Facilities Meeting is, is that there's, hopefully, you know, they'll verify this, this, uh, viability, they've got the water working, and hopefully we're gonna transition to a, you know, if we continue to have it under our portfolio, at least under the current, currently the way it sits, gonna be able to drastically, hopefully, it's intended to drastically reduce the monthly costs that we're incurring right now by, um, having, having a little different situation, uh, securing the site. So, uh, that was encouraging, but as was heard, we got less than a year to really, I think, uh, get this solved and maintain the viability of the, uh, current, um, what do we call that? SUP, the Special Use Permit. Okay. So Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Mokrheyski, we spoke about this briefly this morning. Um, you know, the article in the Register Guard, they didn't seem to fully characterize exactly the proceedings that we're going through today. So I just wanna make sure that, uh, this is kind of the beginning of a RFP process, and even though we have less than a year to complete it, and, uh, should we be successful in awarding a, a, a successful RFP, pretty short order in order to get people on, on board and actually functioning by the time the, uh, the permit expires, that's all correct, right?
That's correct.
So the, I think the most important thing for me to, to be comfortable with is, we're the start of a period of time, period of, uh, start of the, uh, process right now, excuse me. And, um, you know, uh, Ms. Mokrheyski, you and I traveled out there some time ago with the folks who are interested in, in doing rehabilitation services, I'll generalize it as rehabilitation services. And I've heard from a number of other people who are anxious to see what the process is going to be, uh, in order to, uh, see if it's something that can be, actually turn what is now a, uh, it's called here a, yep, a relic, in, in the Register Guard article this morning, a derelict relic, as to turn it into something that is actually performing a, not just a small service, but potentially a great service for the, for the people who potentially could be, uh, rehabilitated there. Once again, general characterization of rehabilitation services. So I just wanna make sure that I'm, I'm correct in presuming that this is a process that is underway right now, nothing's finalized at this point in time, that we're, uh, just moving to see what the possibilities, what the options are for, uh, removing a $250,000 liability, annual liability, $40,000 in utilities alone, my word. That's more than I pay on my house. Um, so that, uh, so good, I, so I'm, I'm safe, and if somebody asks me after I leave this meeting, is the process going on? Can I be a part of the process? I, I can actually say, yes, you can.
Correct. And perhaps as Commissioners, it, it may not be fully reflected in the board order, but, um, as we've been discussing, even once this was submitted, um, it, there's some suggestions, recommendations, certainly, decision points regarding an RFP here, but, um, really, I think probably the most prudent step forward would be, uh, to get that direction from the board, draft, um, that RFP and then return to the board, um, with that draft before we advertise it to ensure that the board and, and all the feedback they might receive from the public, um, is fully reflected in that RFP before we go out. So yes, it is a very initial step in a process that'll have many opportunities along the way for kinda shaping how we're gonna pursue it.
And, you know, in my three-plus years of working here in the county commission, I've seen the way you personally, uh, go about performing your business, and, uh, you kinda look at where we need to be and you walk backward to make sure that there's enough time to perform the steps along the way. Uh, it'd be terrible to get to within two weeks of it and still have three weeks worth of work to do to, to.
Yeah, the deadline we're currently facing with regard to land use, we have extended it once, but of course, that's an application process with a number of things that we need to demonstrate, and so there's by no means assurance that that extension would occur again. So we wanna be serious about that deadline and don't wanna treat that as something that's, you know, we can, we can move, um, kinda at our will, um, that there's a process that we have to engage in to do that and.
And it places a, a certain sense of urgency on the process at this point.
Yeah. That and the, that and the financial side, so we're eager, yeah.
Exactly. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Mokrheyski.
Commissioner Lika?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple questions. So states here in the, in the packet here that an appraisal conducted in 2010 gave the value range of 70 to $100,000, and that was in 2010. So question is, do you believe the appraisal's changed much since 2010? What's your thoughts on that? I know this is not urban commercial property, it's, um, kind of in the, out of ways, and, uh, so what's your thoughts on the, maybe on the appraisal? And if it's, if you think it's, it's changed at all?
Uh, Commissioner, uh, it's been a while since I read through it, but it was a full appraisal, and really what it took into account was the limited land use of the forest zone. Um, it was unable to, without any proposal on the table for the facilities, really evaluating any alternative use. And so as forest land, forest land property, and the most likely buyer is a neighboring timber owner, uh, this property is not forested. And so, um, in order to kinda maximize the benefit, there'd be, uh, some planting and, and harvesting far into the future. So it took into account all those factors, this forest land, and that's why there's that relatively, what, what you'd see as probably, uh, a surprisingly low value.
Yeah.
Um, and so those are the aspects that went out into that. I, I don't think, I don't know that they would've changed significantly since the time of that appraisal.
Uh, question, so you mentioned that a letter, letter of interest was put out in 2013, is that correct? Did I hear that correct?
Yeah.
So what was entailed in the letter of interest? So when you, when you send a letter out, you're, you're obviously wanting to have some sort of interest, so was the interest is just based on the facility itself and what it's zoned at? Was there any, anything else mentioned in the, in the, um, RFI?
No, it, it was very basic. It, it was intentionally different than an RFP. Um, the bar was set lower. It was really meant to cast a wider net and just see what interest was out there. Um, at the time, we got three responses. Um, since that time, we've heard from a number of other organizations, and so, um, at that time, it was, it was really meant to be a lesser process than the RFP process, and, uh, really just meant to kinda gauge the level of interest. And so, um, at this time, given the number of additional parties that have reached out to us, I think an RFP process is appropriate.
Well, I like how you gauge that, 'cause that's what an RFI's supposed to do, supposed to be a wide net.
Right.
And I think you gauge that correctly, so I appreciate that. Um, uh, those are the questions I have, I think, as far as, you know, kinda gauging where we are today. Uh, you're gonna, you're looking for direction on how to proceed, is that, is that what you're looking for from the board?
Yeah, if, if the board supports what, what, what we discussed at the Facilities Committee in moving forward with requests for proposals for the Forest Work Camp, uh, we'd certainly be eager to begin that work. Um, there's a few decision points I've included in the packet that, uh, I would really appreciate a discussion around, um, and which, and I can step into that as soon as you're ready.
I, I strongly support an idea of going out for an actual RFP, and I, and I do think you have to, uh, I think you have to categorize it as, as, RFP as what you have, and an RFP of what may, what you may have, and that would include, uh, the different zoning without the buildings. And so I, I, that's, I, I believe if you're gonna send something out and actually get maybe some interest, uh, you know, what kind of interest is gonna be in the buildings itself? I mean, the what you have out there is, I mean, I have a, I, I don't know. There, maybe there is? I have no idea, uh, but, but I do believe, I, I just think you should have some options available on the RFP. I just don't think you need to put yourself in a, in a box, and that, that's my thought on that. And, um, you know, I'll, you know, if legal has thoughts on that, if we can or cannot, I mean, I, I would, I would, I'm more than happy to listen, but, um, I just wanna make sure we feel like that, I, I mean, I, I just view this as just something that's just sucking the blood out of the county right now. I mean, that's just all this is, and I, I just, I'm not sure what the benefits are of, for that, I mean, it's a hundred and five acres, maybe it's a beneficial, benefit to a private sector organization that they, maybe they can see benefits into it with or without the buildings. I have no idea.
Well, staff would like the opportunity to look into what it will take, to, well, the ability to, uh, opportunity to assess the septic and the plumbing and, um, some of the infrastructure, like the, the roof, the roofing. So, uh, I think that, um, depending on the board's direction, um, that may be an integral part of the RFP, stating the condition of the buildings.
Sure. I mean, that's fine. I, I would just caution spending too much money on, on doing assessment of, of what, what you have out there. I mean, if you're already noticing the, uh, the deterioration, I mean, I, I just, uh, I would just caution on, on that as well. I mean, it's not as if we're trying to save, save the Lane Events Center, large, large building here in, in an urban area, so that's just some general thoughts.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thanks a lot. So the road is kinda forking at, we're not selling it, we're not leasing it, we're moving down the road of assessing it and then putting out an RFP, and what's the timeline for this?
Well, we would probably try to move with doing somewhat of an assessment of the existing conditions out there outside of what we already know about the well systems. As I said, there are four wells out there, two are functioning, two are, are not, and probably never will be again. So, uh, the well that we recently had, um, repaired serves the main administration building, which is significant. The other, I believe, is an irrigation well that supported, um, gardening and the plantings that they were doing out there at the time.
What's the timeline then to do this assessment and put out the RFP?
Well, I, I would say the assessment, we can move on fairly quickly.
You're talking weeks or months?
Well, uh, I would probably take some time because it's a, um, competitive procurement process to find someone to, you know, go out there and do the assessment. I wouldn't think it would take too long, however. Probably we could accomplish that within a month or so.
Okay. What's the process after that?
Well, I'd anticipate the drafting of the RFP and the condition assessment to be unparalleled tracks, and that the condition assessment would ultimately inform the final RFP, uh, for the sake of full disclosure to the potential respondents. And once we bring those together, I, I think Betty's assessment of one to two, two months, um, we could come back with a draft of RFP based on the direction you've given us for your consideration and review to make sure it's fully reflecting the wishes of the board and the feedback they've received from the public at that time.
Is this RFP being written around the needs of a particular organization, like the state or a nonprofit that you've been working with, or is this a broader RFP? Or how would you describe that?
I, I think we would take it as a broader RFP. Um, I, I pulled the, uh, the request from 2013, and it was very general. Um, it, they talked about respondents needed to indicate their interest, they needed to provide a brief description of their one or more proposed uses of the facility, given its, uh, location and the improvements and the zoning, and, uh, a brief summary, summary of their experience, background or qualifications for operating such a facility.
Okay, and?
Given the current zoning of the site, um, its use is still fairly restrictive. So I would say if we go out for the RFP, we would need to be, um, very clear that the, the zoning is still restrictive and it wouldn't necessarily be, um, something readily available for a private party to build a personal residence. And I, I will say from the article in the Register Guard, um, I've had a number of people call me who are interested in doing just that.
Now, uh, regarding, well, that's good, that's good. It's, that's just the government working hand-in-hand with the news media to provide the public with inaccurate information. So, okay. Um, I, I think the board majority has a non-subscription policy to the Register Guard, by the way, just for information.
That's right.
Yeah, see, at least I'm one of them. It's actually my wife's policy, not mine, but I live there, so. Um, so regarding the, uh, uh, possible use by the Oregon Youth Authority or the Oregon State, um, uh, correction system, because the, the inmates that were there were low-risk inmates, there has been over the years, an idea, uh, that as the state is ramping up, was during some of this time, was ramping up, um, building prisons, that they were looking for counties, I believe Multnomah County made an arrangement with the state to take, to take inmates from the state. So have we been in touch or will we be drafting? So have we been in touch or will we be drafting this RFP so that Oregon Youth Authority or the US Federal Prison System or the Oregon State Prison System will be eligible for the RFP? Or is it just being written for a nonprofit?
I don't believe we would craft it so it was favoring one entity over another. We would certainly try to reach out to all the entities that you mentioned, make them aware that it is being advertised on our website.
Okay. And what about other counties that are, and I don't think there are too many, but there might be a few counties that are looking for partnerships to locate their prisoners or their youth?
Well, I, I think that we can make that part of our due diligence, to reach out to those entities.
Okay. I, I noticed that, you know, I, I just MapQuested forty-seven miles. What's the, what's the time? What's the driving time? The safe driving time?
Depends on who's driving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is it, about fifty minutes? About an hour?
Yeah. It depends on how quick you get out of, out of Eugene proper and then you're on your way.
But it, it was regarded, I think, in the, in the, in the time when we had, when the county had money for it, it was still regarded as kind of a long process to get inmates out there. And that the type of programming that you'd have, you'd have to really take that into consideration because that is a long trip. It's a long round trip.
Yeah, Commissioner, there's some of the folks that have had an opportunity to visit out there, you know, it's been the primary concern with any concept that they've had, is how to support some of the proposed programs that they would house out there and respond in instances of emergency, et cetera. And anecdotally, we've, we've heard that that was an issue with the sheriff's office as well.
Yeah. I've always been interested in, in the delay that we've had on trying to figure out what to do with this and whether we could approach some of the fire districts for a demolition, a training operation where they get rid of the whole thing. Are we at that point or is the value of the structure and the value of the way it's laid out really worth it? Because we could go through another five years at X hundred dollars or a thousand dollars a month and we go, gee, back in the day, someone suggested, let's burn it down as a training mission. And yeah, that sounds pretty horrible because it looks like we're burning up valuable public resource, but it's costing us a lot of money to sit on this.
Yeah. If the decision is made to demolish, the improvements are certainly less expensive ways to go about that. At this point, you know, without fully gauging any potential use for those facilities, I think it'd be premature to make that decision.
Do you have a, what I might call a gut opinion about what way we should go on this? Like who would be the proper people to get the facility?
I guess my, Commissioner, my perspective is more informed by what's best for the county as opposed to, you know, who would best assume it. So I think what would be best for the county at this point, given our inability to identify beneficial county uses would be to, well, as the board packet says, sell to an entity that we feel would return it to a beneficial use and whatever that beneficial use may be.
So maybe I need to back up. I thought we had gone down the road of lease and sell and said, no, we want to do an RFP. And then RFP is for a limited period of time that they use the facility. You just said we might end up selling the facility.
Well, the RFP, the, the consideration of the RFP, one of the items I have for you to consider is whether you'd want to sell or put it up for lease or either as part of that RFP process. RFP process wouldn't necessarily be a third item. It would be an item that would facilitate one of those two options.
Well, just on my one-fifth of the nickel or one-fifth of the dollar, one-fifth of the dollar, I would say we should go down the route of an RFP for the idea that a nonprofit or a government agency would be the preferred RFP and it wouldn't be a lease. It would be for the period that is reasonable for that RFP to use that facility and use it for the beneficial purposes of that facility. Not necessarily and definitely not, I would say definitely not, a lease for a lengthy period of time or sale. That's just my, just trying to explore, express my point of view.
Commissioner Bozovic and Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. First, just to get to something that Commissioner Sorenson brought up, I've participated with staff in touring the Department of Corrections, Oregon Department of Corrections folks out there to look at that as a potential site for forest work camps similar to their South Fork Facility up near Tillamook. And they, yeah, thought it would be a great site and all that, except for the fact that it wasn't close to any of their other correctional facilities and it was way too far from medical services and other services like food service and other providers they would need, laundry, whatever. Even if they did some of it on-site, there's still off-site needs to reach there and they just felt it was not a feasible thing for them to look at. So we have, it's not like we haven't been trying to get somebody to take this off our hands. We've been working pretty diligently about bringing folks out there and touring the facility and looking at it. What I will say is that once word got out that we were interested in possibly transferring not just leasing it, I've had several contacts. And in fact, just the article today, I've heard from, you know, the Justin Time folks again, Oregon Department of Forestry is interested in this, has potential fire station and, and future, and to hold on to it for firefighting work camps. The Roseburg Forest Products, of course, is interested in it to convert it back to forest, I think. And I've even seen, you know, comments from Mr. McFadden in the audience about converting it to a potential farm and, and making it work as a, as a farm. So there's obviously a lot of interest in this. What I'd like to try and clarify is are we asking for a request for proposals or are we asking for a request for bids? And, you know, for my twenty cents of the dollar, I'm ready to dispose of the property. So my, so my question, and this is where the attorney might want to sit up at the table, Mr. Chaney, is is there a process we have to go through to dispose of public property? Now, my, I think if I remember my ORS and OAR, there's, we have to first declare it surplus property and then offer it to other governmental agencies first before we can actually take public bids on the property. Is that correct or, you know, I, I want to understand, you know, if we actually are going to sell this property, what is the actual legal process under Oregon public laws for disposing of public land?
I guess the correct answer to that, like every legal question is, it depends. In, in reality, one of the things, if we declared it to be surplus property, we could do that, we could even do a sheriff's sale and put a minimum price on it. And then if we, and then if the board, and if it did not receive an offer for the minimum price, the board would then have broad authority to, to sell it. If on the other hand, it goes for a nonprofit, if, if the proposer were a nonprofit or another government agency that we wanted to go to, then there isn't any particular process except that if it's a nonprofit agency, then we have to retain a reversionary interest as we did in the Turtle Flats property, where if we transfer it to a private nonprofit that, for a public use or social services, that we retain a reversionary interest in.
So that, that's.
So there are a couple of different steps if you want to go one way or go another way, depending really upon the nature of the party that, that we'd want to transfer it to.
My interest in this is gaining the, the maximum financial return to the county, seeing we're already dumping a quarter million dollars a year into this property. So we basically need to go to declaring it surplus property and putting it up for sale to all potential bidders if we want to have a private entity like Roseburg Forest Products be allowed to, to put in a proposal for the land. Am I making the correct statement there?
Yeah. I actually have to go back and update myself in the law on this.
Okay.
But that is likely the most likely process that we would go through to make sure we could do that. And that might be a step in the operation.
Yeah. But if we were to do, say, an RFP and only open it to nonprofits and other governmental agencies, we could do it, do a transfer with that restrictive deed if it's a nonprofit, where it reverts back to us like we did Turtle Flats and do that. That's not a completely open process though, because that doesn't give any private entities an opportunity, private for-profit companies or, or individual private parties to purchase the, the property. So we're eliminating part of the, the universe that may want to purchase that property that's not a nonprofit or a government agency.
Yes, I understand. It's, it's hard to have an RFP process or a process that includes lump sum bids and evaluations and everything all in one. And I think that's one of the reasons why Brian would like some guidance. And I'll, I'll mention one thing that I, I thought was a piece of urgency about this. Brian mentioned the non-conforming use on this and having to go into another application. So if we were to transfer this or, or lease or however to another party, Brian, would that party basically would have to have some level of operation ongoing by next March? It's not a, next March, we have to be under an agreement. We would have to enter into an agreement that would enable someone else to have taken on that use in order, and to ensure that. And I expect anybody who did have a use that was going to be a non-conforming use would want to know we're acting fast enough that they could actually have time to do that before they would give us a valid proposal. So that's one of the things I think.
Either that or have made enough improvements to establish a vested interest and, and show that they're, that they're, they've vested their non-conforming use. I'm familiar with abandonments of the non-conforming use and, and what happens to them in the law. So if, my two cents, my twenty cents on the dollar here is we should go down the road of declaring it surplus property and just doing a straight request for, for bids on the property. What people want to do with it after they purchase it with us is up to them. If they want to continue on with the non-conforming use and utilize the active buildings that are there, or if they want to bring in the local fire district, burn the buildings down and convert it back to forest is fine. Or if they choose to, you know, make it into a farm, which I think in F1, you're allowed to do agricultural practices. So, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's things that you can do there even without the non-conforming use. But the one thing that you really can't do is come in there and do something that's outside of the non-conforming use or that's not an ag use or forest use. You know, it's resource land and it's clearly, clearly zoned out. You're not going to be able to build a single-family starter McMansion out there and, and, and live on the property without any sort of either enough farm income to justify a residence there. And even that's going to be pretty difficult. But my twenty cents is go towards surplus and, and a request for bids. We get the highest amount of financial return and then it's no longer a county issue. We don't have to worry about the non-conforming use. We don't have to worry about, you know, extending that. We don't have to worry about anything. It's somebody else's problem at that point.
Okay. So I got Commissioner Farr. You know, it seems like we're completely on the opposite spectrums here, so we'll see where we can get with this.
Brian, I'm hanging my, whatever amount of money I have on what you said, what's best for the county. And given that, I prefer a little bit of latitude in the direction that we give to you today. You know, Jim, earlier I'd mentioned the urgency of this and that any, anybody who's a, who's going to be producing an RFP has to know that they're going to be able to conform within, before March 17th of next year. And so, you know, all of that goes into account. So Brian, a couple of things. We, we put out a letter of, let's see, a letter of interest in June 2013. The broad net we put out, huge, huge, got three respondents, one of them was us. And so that's not a very broad catch on, on a, what is a broader net than potentially what an RFP would be. So it seems that it's going to be a pretty specified or a pretty focused responder on this, somebody who's already thought about it perhaps a little bit. I think there are a number of people in the community who have. And I'm, I'm looking at something right now from somebody who sent it to me that the primary goal is to gain access to a suitable land mass that ideally would have facilities that could be refurbished for residential treatment use and, and all support activities. Example, kitchen, laundry, classrooms, physical fitness, et cetera. Now, this isn't talking about our property. This is talking about what they need and what they're looking for. And my understanding, I don't really know very much about them, but they're well-funded and they're looking for something that would be large enough to allow for farming, both greenhouse and field cropping, attain self-sufficiency in food production and contribute to the community food, food resources. Sound, you know, I mean, it's almost like they looked at our property and wrote this. So I'm presuming that when we do put something out, if we keep it broad enough that, that the respondents can, can perhaps write their RFP based upon what they've already been thinking about. You know, if they'd have to start thinking about it right now and have to come into the process knowing that we have three hundred and forty-eight days to, to complete the entire process, then, you know, as, as we're going to, we're destined for failure based on the fact that last time we put out a request for a letter of intent, only two people other than Lane County parole and probation responded. So you're offering us some alternatives on this, Brian, and there are three options down here. The second option, the first is to continue to recommission portions of the facility and establish a less costly form of facility supervision to address the annual cost of ownership. Second is to continue to recommission portions of the facility in preparation for new tenant slash owner. Tenant slash owner, that gives you latitude there. Can be somebody who's interested in buying or somebody who's willing to go into some form of lease with us. Direct public work staff to issue a request for proposals, seeking proposals from parties wishing to lease or own the property. Doesn't say if it's a state or, doesn't say if it's a private entity, doesn't say if it's a government, a nonprofit or a for-profit. And report back to the board once the responses are received. That's the direction that I would lean toward, is give you that sort of latitude, not to say, go out looking for somebody who's going to own it, look out for somebody who's going to rent it, just what you say in option two, lease slash own, tenant slash ownership. You know, I, that's the direction that I would prefer to give you at this point in time, is go out with something a little bit more broad like this. If somebody comes back with something that is well-defined, that is well-funded and ready to rock and roll, we're all going to win out of it. And going back to something Commissioner Sorenson said, I'm going to rephrase it a little bit differently. We have a potential asset here that's going to be good for Lane County in that it addresses levels of service that we're simply not giving at this point in time. Earlier, I classified them as rehabilitation services. It could be for veterans, it could be for youth, it could be for, for behavioral health issues, substance abuse issues, whatever it may be, medical rehabilitation in general. But to me, giving you that, just pretty much what it says in option two, is the direction that I would like to go, to give you an opportunity to work backwards as you do so well, to make sure we fit the urgency timeline that we have in front of us and make certain that the people who are responding understand the timeline in a way that they know that by the time the deadline hits, they're going to be performing their, their use in a fashion that, that satisfies the, satisfies the, the conditions of the existing permit that's due to expire. So that's my, that's my recommendation, option two, basically, as it's written, which is continue to recommission portions of the facility, which we've done a little bit for the Forest Service or whomever, just making it, making it usable for certain functions. And direct public work staff to issue a request for proposals for tenant, for RFP, seeking proposals from parties wishing to lease or own the property and then report back once the RFP is received. That would be my idea of, of a set of instructions for you at this point in time.
Okay. Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of view this as almost a, if this were, Lane County were a bank, this would just be a bad loan. You'd just want it off your portfolio. And no different than what, what happened with, which is now the Willamette Sports Center. That was a nonprofit privately owned facility appraised at four, four million dollars. Amqual Bank wanted it off their bad loan program. Willamette Lane was able to secure that for 1.4 million. And what Amqual Bank did, they wrote it off. They got it off, it's off their bad, bad loan program, the FDIC thugs like that. And so they come in and they'll do their, their audits and from a regulatory standpoint, they appreciate that, they get it off the, the debt. I, this is the same thing. I, I just view this as just something that's just hanging on. Lane County, we've been dumping a quarter million dollars into this on an annual basis and what return are we getting? I've done a couple of real estate investments in my past life and frankly, I, I think I'm leaning more towards with Commissioner Bozovic on this one. But you know what? If, if the board, if... If, if the board, if we have majority that would like to go option two, I'm not going to argue with it, but I would suggest you, um, clearly move forward and get this thing moving quickly. Because if we're, the timeline is that, you're, you're telling me March of 2017, that's a year away. And, uh, you know, in order to get things in a position where you're in, you're up and going by March 17th, it's going to take time. And so I would hope that staff would then move forward on this. So I'll, I'll hear from, uh, you know, colleagues, but, but I got to tell you from my perspective right now, I, I'm, I'm leaning toward where Commissioner Bozovic is going and just put out a bid and say, let's get it off their bad, or the, the bad loan program, if you will, for lack of a better term. And, uh, just get it off our portfolio and, um, put it out there for a bid. The other thing is, actually, let's try not to do what the state land board has done with the Elliott State Forest when they put out 48 bids and only three can actually pay for it. And let's make sure that whomever is going to be interested in this, they have the financial wherewithal to actually be able to take it off our hands if that's going to be the case. So, um, I, I just, uh, that's, that's always been the challenge, I think, is when you have the surplus property available, is that you put out these different proposals, these RFPs, and you get people that say, yeah, it sounds like a great idea. And then you do your, your background check on them and then find out, oh, financially they can't even step up to the plate. So I think that that would be key, is making sure that whomever is able to, to, uh, perform, uh, they have the financial wherewithal to make it happen. Because time, a year is going to come up, come, come upon us very, very quickly and it's going to be here before you know it. So that's my thoughts. Oh, and, uh, but again, if the majority of the board wants to go with, uh, option two that Commissioner Farr suggested, then I'm not going to, you know, throw a hissy fit by any stretch of the imagination, but I will suggest that we get moving quickly.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. Well, one of the things I would really like to see in this is for, uh, governments and nonprofits that really don't have the ability to buy property, like they're not an adjacent forest land owner that owns forest land, or they're not a bank that owns, you know, has money to invest. Um, I would like to see an opportunity for these nonprofits to be treated fairly in this because, uh, we aren't just a landowner and we're a government, so we're not just a landowner. We would be renting out space in this courthouse if we were just a landowner, but we don't do that because we have other responsibilities and things that are different than other landowners. So I'd like to see some attention to those nonprofits and we heard earlier, maybe they, uh, serve vulnerable populations, maybe they serve, um, what my mother might call juvenile delinquents, maybe they serve, uh, prisoners, maybe they serve veterans, maybe they serve, um, people that are trying to advocate for, uh, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, building work into their life and building, uh, farming into their life or building forestry into their life. It seems to me that we could be a lot more creative about this. It may well be that what we've been doing for the last number of years, and that is, um, using the property only in emergency circumstances, it may well be that's been a bad decision. And we could say, well, we made a bad decision, should have rented it out, should have sold it. Um, it may well be though, that if we get, um, aggressive about trying to help solve some of the problems that Lane County government is in the business of solving, uh, through the mechanism of this RFP to these organizations, social service organizations, uh, programs that help people, it may well be that we are able to use our resources in a way that addresses community problems. And that's the point I'm making and that's why I'm so concerned about going down the path of selling the property that's way out in the boon docks anyway. We're not going to get much for it. Um, and yet we would have a community resource that we otherwise wouldn't have access to.
Well, I've gotten a list in four different perspectives, four good ones, thank you. Um, so, you know, I guess for me, we need to move and make a decision on this. Uh, we have a limited timeline of a year to make a decision. Um, I've been concerned that because it's been basically mothballed that it's deteriorating. I mean, that's just the way it is. If you don't use it, a lot of times it deteriorates. So whatever value is there is reducing, you know, probably at some sort of a level, daily or yearly or whatever it is. And so it's in our best interest to make a decision. Um, you know, that facility and, and, you know, I, I think because I'm a rural commissioner, I know that some of the land use laws a little bit better maybe than my colleagues, but...
I don't know what you mean.
Oh, thanks, Pat. I didn't know what I mean.
I'd like to second that motion.
That was a good timing. Um, so because it's F1, there's only certain allowable uses. Uh, one of the reasons that the Forest Work Camp got built there was because it had a forest connection. We had people out there working in the forest and there was a benefit to it. So for us to say that, you know, we could sell this to somebody and if there's no legitimate forest connection use there, it's probably going to be difficult for them to operate there. So at a minimum, there's going to need some planning staff time available when we go through this process because I think prospective individuals should have some time with a professional to understand what they can and can't do. Um, it's not like we're going to be able to, and it may not be in our best interest to offer that up as a rest site, a rest, uh, rest stop site for individuals because it's probably not going to meet the forest, uh, connection. It is possible that there could be a campground created out there because that is a F1 use. Um, but I've ran into this before because what's happened in my district is the Forest Service has built these wonderful, beautiful facilities and they're not bound to our land use laws. And then when somebody wants to go and buy or they want, or the Forest Service wants to liquidate these parcels and these beautiful buildings, there's, uh, nobody that can buy them because there's nobody that can use them with a forest use. And so it's critical that we all understand that there's going to be some, whether, because we have a facility out there and we have a conditional use permit, they're still going to have to follow the land planning. It's not going to be, um, we're going to have some sort of a, a service out there that, that, um, just because we've dreamt of it, it can go out there. It's, it's going to have to meet the state requirements under our state land use law. So that's going to be kind of binding. But that being said, the county has, uh, an investment there. I think personally we should go through the request for proposal process. I don't think it should be limited to leases. I don't think it should be limited to nonprofits or government entities. I think we should just go through a process. And then, you know, there's five of us here, we get, we have great staff that support us with making recommendations and vetting the processes. So, you know, one of the criteria I'm sure they're going to say is, well, I, this is a good proposal, but I don't think that there's the resources behind it to actually make it happen. You know, our legal staff can give us guidance. But I personally would like to see us go through a, a proposal and then each of us in our criteria, um, judge those proposals, if we get any, um, as to what's in the best interest of the county. We might find that, you know, having a facility out there that the Department of Forestry could have as a, um, location for storage of equipment and for, uh, uh, being able to bring in work crews to fight fire might be in the best interest of the county. Or it might be somebody that's rehabilitating people and there's a connection to forest services. You know, whatever it is, I think we have the ability to make hopefully that, that judgment call. But I think, um, not knowing what is possible, um, it's hard for me to say that the absolute best, um, value for the citizens of Lane County is to just say, let's just put it up on the for sale block and sell it. So I'd, I'd like to go through a request for proposal. I may be that that's where I'll be when we get the requests and, and ask what the outcome is, but I, I tend to believe that I'd like to support your option number two and, um, get it out there as soon as possible, uh, to get the, um, proposals coming in. You know, I could see that, uh, you know, we probably want to have something selected by the end of the year and give somebody three plus months to be able to, as you said, move in and actually be operating the facility so that the conditional use permit can be reissued.
So Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, um, if we go with option two as a request for proposal and we haven't gone through some kind of surplus property declaration, will that preclude a private entity from submitting a proposal to purchase the property outright?
That's what I'm going to look into, Commissioner Bozovic.
Okay. I, I'm fine with option two as long as there's still the ability for a straight-out purchase to be part of, to be one of the proposals. If we're going to limit ourselves purely to, uh, lease proposals from nonprofits or other government agencies, I think we've kind of run that road down pretty hard at this point. Um, and, and I don't think there's a lot of viable, you know, we'll be limiting ourselves in, in who wishes to, to own that facility or, or lease it.
Commissioner Bozovic, one of the things I was suggesting to Brian for his consideration is whether we might want to with this RFP process, even if it's open, say that we would have to have proposals and if we have a negotiated agreement by a certain date, then we will go through the process of declaring it surplus because that might focus the respondents on the seriousness of turning in a serious proposal as opposed to talking about it for a year.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Farr.
Then I would like to move to recommend, uh, alternative two, slight change, uh, to direct public work staff to issue a request for proposals, RFP seeking proposals from parties wishing to lease or own the property. Uh, report back to the board once responses are received, understanding we have a strict timeline and understanding the, uh, the conditions that Commissioner Bozovic, um, surrounded that request with. Now, that's not the easiest route for y'all. I mean, that puts more work on your table.
Right. And it's nice, we do this work all the time. But, uh, the, uh, again, the modification would be, I, I would look forward to a discussion at the board once we've drafted that and before we advertise it, just to ensure that we're reflecting, uh, the direction that you wanted us to go with that. So, uh, the next step, a little contrary to what's in here, would be coming back with the draft proposal, uh, that you would then give us direction to advertise.
And the part that I dropped off, Brian, was, uh, continue to recommission portions of the facility. I don't recommend that we put any more resources into it unless it's necessary to, to, I've been out on RFP.
I appreciate that. I think we'll just, um, try to characterize them the best we can in the RFP to, uh, for the sake of full disclosure to respondents rather than, you know, fully recommissioning.
Excellent. The timeframe is very, very short.
So that's a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second the motion. Second. Okay, further discussion? Commissioner Sorensen?
Um, I just think that we're better off as a community to try to keep these community resources with the community. So my no vote today has to do with the option of selling the property because I actually think that's the one that would be the easiest and the one that involves the least amount of work to try to preserve this as a community, uh, you know, resource. And my concern isn't that it would, it would, uh, mean that Lane County as an entity, one of our programs that are looking at this, maybe our parole and probation or, or our, uh, youth services. It, it isn't so much that the county would be disadvantaged, it's more that the community in the form of, of nonprofit groups that are, that are, you know, struggling themselves to provide a worthwhile service to the veterans or to, uh, different vulnerable populations. It's more that, that by inserting the easier option of selling it, we, we say, well, gee, you know, the transaction costs and everything is so much easier just to sell it. And if that's really where the board's headed, then why not just say we're going to sell it? So I think that this is not giving you the kind of direction that I think is appropriate and the kind of direction I think is appropriate, is to really focus on helping these nonprofit groups, you know, that are struggling to do, uh, important work to protect people in our community. So that, that's my perspective.
Commissioner Farr.
Yeah, speaking to my motion that has been seconded, you know, of course I would much sooner see it go to beneficial use by a nonprofit to provide service to hundreds and hundreds, potentially thousands through the years of people who otherwise would not get service. That's my preferred use. However, I'm not going to be obstructionist and say, let's not do anything at this point in time. We've got to do something and this gives you an option to move forward, knowing that I, you've heard from Commissioner Sorensen, he doesn't want to sell. You've heard from me, I would much prefer to see servicing people, giving people service that, that otherwise they may not get and a, a broad range of, uh, of discussion in between. But, uh, I'm not going to, I don't want to slow you down at this point in time. Let's, let's move forward, let's get something done. We don't have a lot of time to do it.
And if I may, just for a moment, I, I think a key piece that might address your concern is the distinction with the RFP process, if we can indeed offer it for sale as opposed to the simple bid process, is that you would have an opportunity to evaluate the proposals, uh, associated with those sale offer or purchase offers, um, and the merits of those as opposed to simple auction where you, it would be the highest bidder.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I stated, I wouldn't, I wouldn't throw a hissy fit on this by any stretch of imagination, but I, I just personally think it's dead weight and, um, I, I would rather we just went out for, call it surplus, put it out for bid and be done with it. But I'm willing to go through this process. I would, I'm, I, I think we need to hold, make sure we hold this, the accountability on this on one year way. We're one year. And, uh, so this is going to be key to get this thing moving forward and, uh, hopefully it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to drag us down. And, uh, I just, uh, I, I just personally think it's dead weight out there. So, uh, that's, that's my feeling, but, uh, I'm not going to vote no. Um, with, you know, I appreciate what Commissioner Farr, his, his thoughts here and on going through the process, Commissioner Stewart, so I'm willing to go through this process, but we're, we're, we have a year.
And I, I appreciate your perspective, Commissioner. Certainly from the fiscally responsible analytical side of me, that's, that's the route, that's the most evident. But having received, um, the interest from different groups over the years and recognizing, um, the, the desire of the board to entertain those and a little more, um, put more effort towards that, although it is, will be more staff effort, um, I, I see the validity in that as well. So we stand prepared to...
Thank you.
...follow the board's direction.
Yeah. And I would just say, for me, it's not specifically, I'm not interested in making a decision just solely based on the dollar value that today is $100,000. I, I think that there, I would hope that there's going to be proposals that come forward that could show us that, um, maybe we're not going to get $100,000 for it, but, um, you know, if we, if we helped save hypothetically a thousand acres from burning up, uh, there's a monetary value there that's in the best interest that, I mean, each of us are going to have to determine what the best interest is. And it could be the fact that we're saving, you know, somebody has a treatment program out there that can meet the F1 zoning and they're able to, um, uh, turn around people's lives and save tens of thousands of dollars of additional costs in the system down the road. Those are the things that I, you know, I will factor in in my decision-making process and I'm sure that each of us will, you know, as we, we base it. And then the bottom line, we'll hopefully make the best, uh, decision that's best for the county and the citizens we serve. All right. So we have a motion. Any further comments? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Pass this for the board. So, thank you for the conversation and I, just a caveat, I don't know if you're able to do it, but generally RFPs, don't you have a, a little, uh, conference meeting to release it or meet with people that are interested? I would say if you do, um, please see if you can coordinate a planner to be present so that, um, uh, anybody that's potentially interested in this property could at least get some preliminary thoughts from a planner, nothing binding, and then hopefully they can get steered to a professional that can help them understand clearly, uh, their proposal's going to be viable or not.
Yeah, I would agree. That's a great suggestion. Yeah, I would anticipate a couple of site visit opportunities and at that time that'd be a great opportunity, uh, to have that person present.
And not, not ask them planning department to do it for free. I think our facility is part of the process that we could compensate, I hope.
Yeah. Our intent is to make sure everybody gets their questions answered and we have the best process possible, so.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, our next item is 15, it's review of assignments.
There's two items, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Stewart's request to invite Oak Ridge to update on code enforcement violations in county areas around Oak Ridge. That's one. And two is the item we just completed to develop an RFP and report back to the board, um, related to the Forest Work Camp.
related to the Forest Work Camp potential uses.
Okay, did you capture it? I think so. All right, thank you. So item 16 is executive session. Before I do that, is there any other business before I read in the executive session? I would note that tomorrow, at 3:00 PM, up at the, our Bob Straub Conference Room, there will be a Budget Committee Orientation Meeting, for those that can attend or choose to attend. So with that, and no other...
Mr. Chair, regarding that meeting, could you give us, or maybe Mr. Mo Kryeski could give us some idea of, what is that? Is that to orient the Budget Committee members to the budget cycle, or is that going to involve the Board of Commissioners making some kind of decision, or giving their perspectives, or, I'm trying to kind of gauge what's meant by budget orientation here.
Sure, thank you, and thanks for the question. Actually, I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about this. I would ask that Commissioners, if you're available, that you really try to attend. It's meant less as an orientation, with one new Budget Committee member, Larry Abel is new to the Budget Committee. We've met with him, we've spent time, you know, briefing him and orienting, orientating him to the Budget Committee process. Tomorrow is really intended as a discussion with the board members and the citizen members of the Budget Committee around the process. So we're precluded under state law from talking about specifically the budget itself, the details of the budget, and the challenges that we're facing, and potential solutions. So we will not be talking about anything that potentially would be proposed in the budget or discussed during the budget process. We will be talking about the process itself. Number of meetings we're planning to have, how to structure those meetings, what the Budget Committee would like to hear from departments. For example, we put together, you heard Mr. Dingo talk about the transit room tax work that's happening. I put together a revenue task force that includes that work around transit room taxes, as well as other things to look into, what are potential existing revenues that could be adjusted, or reallocated in different ways. So that's one conversation that we'd want to, you know, say, do you want to carve out an hour or two, just in a meeting during the Budget Committee process, to talk specifically about that? Do you want to talk specifically about health insurance? Do you want to talk specifically about the jail levy, or public safety services? So the goal really is just to seek feedback and get buy-in from the committee members around the process. If you recall, last year, at the end of the process, there was some desire from some members of the committee to have more discussion, and a feeling that there wasn't really enough time at the end of the process to do that. So what we want to do this time is say, let's decide what the process is, and get buy-in and support for that upfront, so that we're all on the same page going into, you know, May 3rd, and the few weeks following that. So that's what tomorrow is, and I really encourage you, if you're able to attend, to please do that, and voice your opinion, and then hear what the citizen members would like to do in the process.
The committee chair will appreciate that approach.
Yeah.
Okay. Before we enter an executive session, I'd like to ask you a question. Did I see where, in the paper, where Mr. Ovi announced his general contractor and design team for moving forward with the property, that we have contract with him?
Yes.
Okay, great. I want to make sure I was, interpreted it right.
And we should bring an update to you on that project in the near future.
Okay. But with that, I'd like to read us into executive session. We will recess until 3:30, as it's time certain at 3:30. The Board of Commissioners will meet in an executive session to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation and litigation likely to be filed. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660, subsection 2, subsection H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in an executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session. We will also reserve the right to come back out into public session, should the needs arise. So with that, we are in executive session on recess until 3:30.